Okay, call our village board meeting for January 18th to order. Roll call, please.
Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Sam Kaufman.
Here.
Aaron Moran. Chris Zellner.
Here.
Bill Ranum.
Here.
Phil Willem.
Here.
Nyla Fry.
Here.
Carla Andrus?
Here.
Everybody, welcome, Carla.
Thank you.
All right. So first item is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wanakee Tribune on January 14th, 2022. The final agenda was posted at all three official posting locations on January 18th, 2022, and the final agenda and packet were made available online on January 14th, 2022.
Okay, thank you. Then next we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or look for a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg.
I'll second.
Second by Bill Ranum. Any other comments or questions? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Public comment, is there anyone here who'd like to make a comment this evening for any item on or off the agenda?
I do have a few forms. The first one is Rachel Teegum.
Can I go first? Doesn't matter, I guess.
Bill.
Does that work?
You can stay right there, too, unless you want to come over.
Perfect.
Otherwise, you can.
No, this is fine. Good evening. My name is Bill Teegum, and my wife Rachel and I were born and raised right here in Wanakee where we still live. My family owns Little Strokes Swim Academy, a shallow 91-degree warm water pool located in the Arboretum Office Park. Since 2005, we have provided swim lessons for ages six months on up, and we also offer a non-competitive swim team, private pool rentals, water aerobics, water walking, and open swim time. It was mentioned that there was a need for warm water pool time in Wanakee, and we realized that many people might not know who we are or that we offer these services. We are able to get the word out quite efficiently over social media regarding youth swim lessons, but we are not doing a very good job advertising to seniors and others in need. Honestly, we started offering these services at our pool because my mom asked to water walk, and we wish that other people needing therapy, a place to exercise, or wanting to relax sore joints knew that a warm water pool was available. The village's programming for seniors is known to be excellent, and we would love to help fill a void in our community. If there are people asking the village for warm water programs, we would love to help and make our water usable for them. There's a large portion of the day that our pool isn't being used for lessons, and we would love to partner with the village to make better use of that time. We feel that a partnership with the village could help fill this warm water need right away and maybe help save you guys a boatload of money by making the indoor water park a bit smaller or a bit bigger if you want to change the warm water pool to an Olympic-sized pool that would really be great for a coach like me. In summary, Little Strokes currently has an underused warm water pool, and we hope that we can help provide warm water services to the community through a partnership with the village. Also, our pool is a toasty five degrees warmer than the proposed pool. It's like a bathtub in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rachel Teegum?
Hi, my name is Rachel Teegum, and I'm his wife. As he stated, my family has grown up and lived here in Wanakee all our lives. We joined the Wanakee Rural Aquatic Team together as kids, swam for our varsity swim teams in high school, and continued our coaching careers here in town for several decades. Just like us, our kids joined the local Wanakee Wave Swim Team and participated in several classes and sports that the Village of Wanakee has to offer throughout the years. They've loved their gymnastics classes with Ms. Jane, they've loved to play in your park with Ms. Connie, and they enjoyed T-ball with Coach Dave and Coach Jaster. My mom and I have walked many laps at the Village Center and taken several Tammy Gribers fitness classes. During the planning for a new community pool, it's become apparent that people in Wanakee want a place to receive warm water services such as water walking, therapy, water aerobics, water exercise, and private pool rentals. They've come to the village asking for those services, apparently not knowing that we provide them at Little Strokes. Most of the services people need warm water for are for improving their own health, and it's hard to stomach the fact that we offer these services and could be helping these people get healthier, lose weight, or rehab their knee replacement, but we aren't simply because we aren't reaching the right people through our social media marketing. We would love to partner with the village to offer these services through our pool. We don't offer them to make money. No one is getting rich from $3 water walker or a $7 water aerobics class, but these services could be enjoyed by all for the betterment of our community. We just need your help. The village already does an absolutely spectacular job with the wide variety of programming it offers. We would love to combine that expertise with our own warm water pool to help the people of Wanakee. We have times that our pool isn't used, such as before 9:00 AM, between noon and 3:00, and after 7:30 PM, and we would love to help fill those gaps with programs from the village. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Linda Ashmore?
Martha Heimlich, Ashmore, 114 South Street. And I wanted to address a couple of things. One of them is the food pantry. The proposal to move the village hall to the old library, basically paying one and a half to $2 million to gain around 2,000 square feet. It isn't a good move, and I think village board members have come to that conclusion as they've gotten more information. My suggestion is that the village work with the food pantry to see if they would be interested in buying the building through a capital campaign. I have no affiliation with the food pantry, just to be clear. WNC did a capital campaign, and the village could work with them to figure it out. It makes no sense for the food pantry to move to a space that wouldn't work due to space constraints and pay for remodeling and leasing. So I'm talking about just using the basement, which was the original proposal. If they were to own the building, they can figure it out like they want. There's still some ARCA money left, and it could be used as starter money. The other thing I wanted to speak on was the resolution regarding Black History Month. I support the resolution because I think the more we know, the better we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ellen Turney?
I'm happy to see that you're considering staying on Main Street because I think it's extremely important. You want a viable Main Street, but what better thing to remain on Main Street but the village talk where it's very easily accessible to people and it's a presence.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, everybody, for your comments. First item on our agenda is presentation from update from Dane County Supervisor Tim Kiefer.
Thank you. So while coming, while Todd's getting the outline put up, I just want to say something just about what I see my role as with regards to the village board. My view is that I work for you. I see my role as advocating for what the village wants via the county government, and tonight or at any time that there's anything you want done with regards to the county government, I'm happy to act as an ombudsman and try to navigate that process. And with that, I'm told I only have 15 to 20 minutes, so I'm going to move very quickly through these bullet points and then hopefully reserve most of the time just for questions. So update on what the, and can everyone hear me, by the way? I know it's hard to communicate with these masks. If anyone can't, just say something. Going to quickly run through the bullet points. Schumacher Farm County Park on the border between the village and Westport. I'm very proud of what the county's been doing there. That is a park that I think has a lot of potential, and we are making the steps needed to have it come up to its full potential. A few things that have happened recently. There is a house that is next to the driveway owned by the McKeller family, was recently purchased by the county. I want to point out, we are very, very grateful to the McKeller family for agreeing to that purchase that was so helpful to us that they agreed to do that. That house, fine house, but frankly, it's in the wrong situation for the park because it's right at the driveway to the park. So that house has been purchased. At some point, that house is going to be removed. If anyone wants to move the house at their own expense, that's something that the county would certainly be willing to work with people on if someone can afford to move it. But in any event, that house will be moved. That's going to open up the entrance and do a lot of things for flexibility with the park. We are working on restoring more of the farm fields into prairie. One of the concerns I've had, I think from one of the members of this board actually mentioned to me, was that there's not enough in terms of walking trails at the park, and people in Wanakee sometimes, including me, actually go to Pheasant Branch for walking because the trails there are longer. But we are working on restoring the farm fields to prairie, total of 45 acres on tap, of which 17 acres will be restored in 2022. That will then open up more possibilities for more hiking trails. Prairie restoration, which I could talk about for a long time, but I'm not going to. It's a multi-year process. You just can't do it in one year. It takes several seasons to get the land ready to make that transition. It's an interesting process. I wish I had more time to talk about it. But essentially, 45 acres that are now farm fields, and sometimes it's unclear that Schumacher Farm Park is actually bigger than it looks because a lot of it is just cornfields that are rented out to farmers now, but we want to move away from that. County Highway M, as was hopefully reported in the Wanakee Tribune, I won't repeat what was in the article, but about Highway M, there's going to be a public hearing in March. Now is the time to make your views known. Construction schedule begin in 2023, finished in 2024. I can't emphasize enough, having worked in local government for a while now, about the importance of if you have input, get it in now before the decisions are made. The decisions haven't been made yet. Now is the time if you have views on how you want Highway M to look, now is the time to do that. Don't wait until the decisions have been made. So like I said, public hearings come up in March, and there'll be a couple more public hearings before the process is finished. Governor Nelson State Park and the, what I would call village-to-the-lake link. I think it's always been frustrating that we in the village of Wanakee are so physically close to Lake Mendota, yet we've never really had great access to the lake because you have this busy highway, Highway M, that is in between. We do, of course, now have that wooden bridge that goes from the Woodland Drive intersection over to the area by the park, and you have that low-traffic road that, not exactly dead-end road, but basically a dead-end road that then goes down to the back edge of the park, and that's where the bike trail currently stops, basically at the back edge of the state park. The county next year is going to be building a bike path that goes down into the park. So you will be able to, from this spot, if you wanted, where we are right now, get on a bicycle, ride through the village, then be on the bike path going down Woodland Drive. You have only one crossing of a busy road, which would be Highway M, and that's a signalized crossing. From there, you have a wooden bridge that takes you across the marshland, then down North Bay Drive, and then from there, you'll be able to get on the bike path that's going to go through the state park and will take you all the way to Lake Mendota, which I think is a really wonderful amenity. Because if there's one thing we've learned from the pandemic, it's the importance of getting out and exercising the outdoors, having that access. I go hiking and biking in that area all the time, and frankly, it's frustrating for me because I can ride my bike up to the edge of the park, but to actually get in the park on my bike, I then have to get on Highway M and put my life in danger for a half mile or so to actually get into the park. But that's going to be solved, and I'm very, very happy about that. It's something I've fought for for a long time. County park staff is sick of me asking about it, but I'm going to keep doing it. It was supposed to have happened actually in 2020, but then it got delayed due to the pandemic and on and on. But it's going to be done in 2022. Public safety. These bullet points I could talk about for a couple hours, so I'm not. I'm just going to jump over real quickly. Sheriff's Office budget, frankly, I and my county board colleagues somewhat disagree on this. They did vote, not a large reduction, but they did vote on some small reductions to the sheriff's office budget. I did oppose that. I strongly oppose the idea of defunding the police. I think that's a bad idea. I think we need the sheriff's office deputies helping the community and patrolling the roads. So I actually voted on the other side of that, on the budget questions about the sheriff's office budget. The budget cuts were not significant, but still, I think it was the wrong direction. But, you know, that's the way the vote turned out. Much bigger question in terms of dollar figures is the Dane County jail renovation. Again, much larger topic, we don't have time to talk about in detail now. All I will say is that if we're going to fight crime, we need to have a jail. That's, you know, kind of obvious, that you can't have a comprehensive crime fighting strategy without a jail, and the current jail is so inadequate that it's unsustainable. Finally, preventing car thefts and burglaries, there's a question what the sheriff's office can do, there's a question what Wanakee police can do, and there's a question what we can do. And since I'm with the county government, I'd point out that having the deputies on the roads, because a lot of times burglaries and car thefts are people who steal a vehicle in one community, drive on whatever county highway it is into Wanakee, and then commit the crimes and then leave again in their stolen vehicle. So that's why I think the sheriff's office is important to it. Obviously, Wanakee police is very important to it as well, but we all have something to do as well, not leaving our garage doors open, not leaving keys in the ignition. If you choose to own a firearm, don't store your firearm in your car overnight. That's a bad idea. And so law enforcement's doing its job, and I think we all, as citizens, need to do our part as well. I know just, I got to admit, it was pretty recently I finally stopped my practice of on cold mornings, turning my car on and letting it warm up while I went back inside because that's just inviting yourself to get your car stolen. And now I just get in my cold car and I deal with it and encourage everyone here to do the same thing. Clean up the lakes, again, could be a long discussion, which we don't have time for. The focus right now is basically dredging, or sucking out, actually, river bottom or streak, stream bottom, creek bottom sediment. I think Sam Kaufman on this board might have somehow been involved with some of that clearing up of the streams as well. I appreciate his work. So that both removes phosphorus from the streams and also improves lake quality by removing phosphorus that's accumulated over the last 100 years to the bottom of these streams and creeks. So with that, we get to the issue of the Baymont Hotel, and I did do a fair amount of homework to prepare for this, emailed back and forth with Sean Tessman, who is the director of the Dane County Human Services Department. She was very helpful in providing a lot of information to me. I just want to give you a real quick summary of what's going on with the Baymont and then take questions. As part of its public health strategy during the pandemic, the county has worked to isolate medically vulnerable homeless people away from the group shelters, which was a pandemic vector waiting to happen, the group shelters, by using local hotel partnerships. In other words, saying instead of being in a group homeless shelter where you're in close contact and the pandemic would spread, instead we have people stay in local hotels. So then, beginning in spring of 2020, the county's had multiple contracts, several different vendors, several different locations throughout the county for these hotel shelters. And currently, the only contract the county has is at the Madison Plaza Hotel, which is the hotel on East Washington Avenue near the Hy-Vee Grocery Store. That was a contract awarded through a competitive bidding process, and that's the county's vendor for hotels right now. However, during this process, the county also became of other independent efforts to shelter people in hotels, including the Baymont Hotel and Sankofa doing its work at the Baymont Hotel. And the county is interested in helping keep people sheltered and prevent homelessness. So the county did offer to step in and do a direct purchase order with Baymont to pay for the hotel rooms. So in other words, people who are experiencing homelessness who are at the Baymont, the county has an agreement with the Baymont to do essentially vouchers for those hotel rooms. Meanwhile, Sankofa, who does a data management at the hotel, they were awarded federal government money known as Community Development Block Grants, or CDBG if you speak in local government jargon. That was granted in the winter 2021, and that money has to be spent by March of 2022. Sankofa also has been receiving some money from the city of Madison through their grant-making process. Then I want to take it up to the current time. In December of 2021, Dane County Human Services staff were alerted to some concerns about the Baymont and the operations there, and county staff did follow up with Sankofa regarding the concerns that they heard. And I've been assured by Sean Tessman, the head of the department, that the team at Dane County Human Services will continue to coordinate with Sankofa, and they've been in communication about possibly reconvening a group that I think Todd Schmidt originally convened back in December of 2021, of various stakeholders with an interest in the Baymont. And so county staff is interested in potentially working with reconvening that group so that there's good communication. And as the county board member for Wanakee, I know my personal commitment is to do whatever I can to help facilitate communication. I want to make sure everyone who needs to talk about any issues, that that conversation's going on, I'm always willing to help facilitate that. I've been very pleased with the communication I've gotten recently from the department, helping prepare for today's meeting and willing to do whatever I can going forward to make sure that this succeeds at the Baymont. Because it is important to have people who, in the middle of this pandemic, we're all wearing masks right now, in the middle of the pandemic, that people not be out on the street, be in a place that's safe, be in a place where they're not going to be inadvertently spreading the virus by being in a situation that's not safe or they can't isolate if they need to, if they're exposed. So with that, if anyone has any questions about anything on the bullet points, I'm happy to take them. I know my time's limited, but we'll just, if I don't know the answer, I'll write it down and get an answer back to you.
Awesome. Well, I'll just open it up for the board members for any questions that you might have, and I'm going to start with Gary, if that's okay.
It's great to see the trail going through Governor Nelson. That's going to be awesome. The homeless shelter, I've got concerns. It doesn't seem like Wanakee was in the loop on any of this. I know it's been a couple of years now, but it caught us off guard in the community. Talking with Chief Kreitzman, in 2020, we had 135 police calls to that location. In 2021, we had 68 police calls to that location, and in last year's budget, it affected us two ways. Number one, we lost our room tax that we used to use to fund our Chamber of Commerce with, so instead, we had to go to our general fund to take that money to support them. Secondly, at the end of the year, we had to come back at budget time, and it was real close, but we decided we needed, you know, based on Chief Kreitzman, that we needed to add another officer. And I think that was based on the volume of calls that we were getting at that time. So I'd like to see more communications. I mean, I'd suggest that Dane County, Sankofa, the owner of the hotel, I'd love to see them come to our next board meeting and talk about what their plans are. I mean, Wanakee is a very giving community. The Wanakee Neighborhood Connection does wonderful things, provides services for, you know, people in our community. Yet we don't understand the plan. Is this going to be here till funds run out from the federal government? Is it a long-term plan? I know there's money in the $6 or $7 million in the county budget to purchase a homeless shelter. I just think it would help the board members out if we knew, you know, what their long-term or short-term plans are.
Absolutely, and I will definitely, I took notes on that. I'll definitely pass that on to the department. I'll say in terms of how this originated, I can assure you that this was not something that came up for a county board vote. It's not something that I was consulted on. It's not, I found out about it through reading about it in the newspaper, just like everyone else did. So I think that although I'm more focused on the future than the past, I think frankly, the communication in the past has not been what it needs to be, and I think that does need to change. As for inviting Sankofa to the next board meeting, of course, I'm not in control of that, but I know there was some discussion about whether or not someone should reach out to Sankofa for this meeting, and the thought was because it was noticed as an update for me rather than an update from Sankofa that, not to have Sankofa be invited as a speaker for this meeting, but it was something that I think should be considered so that they can answer the questions because they are the ones who are day-to-day there running the hotel. And frankly, if you're having 135 police calls in 2020, 68 police calls in 2021, that's basically twice a week in 2020 and more than once a week in 2021, and, you know, that's a lot of police calls for one address. I completely agree with that, and I think we need to look at how can the county be a good neighbor and not be putting unreasonable demands on a municipality like that to have, where in fact, you even have to increase your police department budget to deal with it. So these are all serious concerns, and I'll pass them on.
All right. Thanks, Tim.
Nyla, any questions?
I agree with Gary's concerns, and I'm glad he brought them up, but I also want to bring up that I'm very proud of the community and the food pantry and the neighborhood connections who help with the services that the people living in the Baymont. It was great that those organizations stepped up, and I think they did a good job. So I'd like to use this opportunity to tell those groups thank you.
Sam?
Nothing specific for me. Definitely would agree with having Sankofa come here to one of our board meetings and keep up the great work and continue to advocate.
Couldn't hear everything you said, but I kind of heard "great work," so I'm just going to assume now is a compliment and leave it at that. So thank you.
Bill?
Nothing at all.
Aaron?
Just echo what you guys said, and I think, kind of going off on Nyla's side, I think if there, and improve, improving the communication, maybe there's more ways we can assist the residents and just help respond to different needs. And also love talking about prairie restoration, so I'll just use this time to say if people want to get involved with the restoration, it's really a great way to, can collect seeds or help planting and stuff, so.
Yeah, and if I could just respond to that, I have pestered county park staff for a long time about saying we need to do more prairie restoration, and typically, the response they receive back is the limiting factor in prairie restoration is getting volunteers to do it. And I know it's challenging because there's things that people grow up learning how to do, and there's things you don't really grow up learning how to do, and most of us just don't grow up learning how to restore prairie. It's something you have to learn, but my understanding, it's not all that difficult, and it's definitely a need. So yes, it's absolutely, if you like to work outside, it's a great opportunity. It's something that would allow the county to restore more prairie at Schumacher if there were more volunteers who wanted to help on that. There, of course, are companies that do it as well, but the volunteers are important to keep the maintenance up, otherwise the weeds creep back in.
Bill?
Super excited about the bike path, of course. Who is Sankofa? Is that, what are they?
So Sankofa, Todd might know as well. My understanding is they're a nonprofit that's based in Sun Prairie, and beyond that, I, again, frankly, I think it'd be a great idea, and I'd be very willing to come back and attend it. I think it'd be great to have Sankofa invited to a village board meeting so they can speak for themselves, but maybe Todd has some more info on their background?
No, that's accurate, that they're in place to serve at-risk populations in a number of different ways.
So I tend to go last, so I'll just say thank you for coming tonight first.
Thanks.
Second, you know, we appreciate everything the county's doing. It's not been an easy last two years, that's for certain, you know, with all the different things surrounding COVID. This was one of those things when we talked about the Baymont. I think from a village standpoint, yeah, it was disappointing, and it was a communication thing totally unsure, somewhere it got missed, that we didn't get communicated that this was taking place, but I would assume that many of the surrounding businesses to that area weren't informed either. I don't know that, but I'm assuming that may have been the case, and that has ramifications on the immediate area as well, especially, as Gary pointed out, with the police calls. Nobody here on our board is going to say we're trying to turn away homeless people or the poor in any way, and it's great that the county took an initiative to help the homeless, especially with the way you described it, Tim, which was trying to prevent spread. And also, right now, obviously, the temperatures that are coming up, we don't want people homeless, we don't want them outside. So it is an opportunity, it was an opportunity, but the communication side is really the only part that I was disappointed in within this. Everything else I'd echo what the board member said. Public safety, you know, what's going on with that? You know, hearing COVID again is part of that whole situation. You know, there's many things that you're doing that really we don't, as a body, have a lot of input. as a body have a lot of input because we don't know, frankly. That would be one of those things. The cleaning up the lakes, how far does that come up here? Is that, is that gonna reach all the way up into Wanakee where they're sucking muck? I mean, with our creeks?
It's the pond down on Woodland Drive. They're just doing the pond.
Just the pond, not the creeks at all.
Right, just the pond, and up a little ways, but no, they're not coming up this far.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Sam. It's just good to know. I'm just curious if our creeks are in good shape and that they don't need to have that done, or, 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 that's all.
Yeah, so.
I'm talking about Wanakee right now and where we're at, and everything is flowing towards the lake. So we're higher up in Dane County to come down, so.
Yeah, so let me just respond to two of the points you made. One, I am also disappointed in the communication that didn't happen in the past. And again, I, I'm hopeful though about the future. I think the department has definitely heard from me and from others that there needs to be better communication going forward, and I think they're in agreement with that. But I also am disappointed what happened in the past with the communication about the Baymont. Then with regards to the the stream banks, my understanding of this is that basically starting roughly 100-some years ago, when large-scale dairy farming first became something here in Dane County, that's when the sediment started to accumulate that had the phosphorus in it. So you're looking at, you know, literally 100 years worth of sediment. And you're right, because the, a drop of water that falls here ultimately makes its way into the lake. So the Six Mile Creek, creeks in this area in the, in the village would at least potentially be part of the effort because that is leaching sediment into the lakes. I know they're looking at different segments at different creeks each year, and I don't know if at some point they would end up coming here directly into the village or not, but the concern is what's going on downstream into the, to the lake. And what's going on with water here affects what's going in the lake just as much if it's closer to Lake Mendota because it all ends up in the lake. So I would imagine, given that there's been substantial dairy farming operations in this area for about 100 years, that at some point, they'd be looking at Six Mile Creek and some of the, the waterways that are, are closer to where we are right now.
Perfect. If anybody else has anything, I just want to say thank you again for coming out tonight.
Yeah, my pleasure.
And taking our concerns back.
Anytime.
And positives, too.
And what?
And the positives, too.
Yes.
A lot of great things. I want, if people tend to focus into the negatives, there's lots of positives, too.
Yeah, there's both. There always is both.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks.
All right. Under Old Business, continued discussion regarding potential aquatic facility, facility design presentation by Councilman Hunsaker. Sue, are you? Pat?
Yep, I'm gonna be bringing our, our consultant up here. And Sue, Sue, do you want to provide an introduction in terms of what our recent activity has been, the recent work we've been doing up to this point? Or should we just let George take it away?
I think we can just let George take it away.
All right. Hold on, George, let me do a couple other tweaks. We should now be able to hear you as well.
Okay, you can see my screen and hear me, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. My apologies for not being there in person. I had conflicting council and board presentations today, so I appreciate the flexibility to join remotely. And so since our last meeting in December, December the 8th, I believe, to be exact, we looked at our initial options for consideration. We heard lots of great feedback. We were also able to meet with our stakeholder and steering group committee and users at the tail end of December to show them the presentation that we showed you all and to have further discussion. So what I'd like to do is just give a quick update of where we've been since then and where we are today, and answer some questions that have come up along the way. So as a refresher, you know, we showed an all-outdoor option that had outdoor lap lanes, an outdoor recreation pool, water slides, children's area. We also showed a combination of indoor and outdoor aquatics that had, you know, some indoor amenities like you see here on the left, and then outdoor seasonal amenities. And then lastly, we showed an all-indoor option. And what we quickly found is that really the feedback that we got gravitated toward either the outdoor seasonal or the indoor, outdoor option. It seemed from my perspective that there, there was just a lot of interest in in those two, but not necessarily in the indoor-only option. So, you know, we showed a variety of ranges for construction and project cost. You know, we have the site requirement, we're looking at, you know, three and a half to six acres of land, essentially. We looked at the varying levels of cost recovery and discussed what those would be for the different options. But we did hear some comments specifically related to both the, the indoor and outdoor option. You know, we did hear that an indoor pool is, is a needed amenity, you know, in Wanakee during the wintertime, specifically on our call with the project steering committee. It was, it was quite a cold day, as, as I'm sure you all are used to, but, you know, the comment was, an indoor pool would be great for the kids on a day like today. We also saw the indoor/outdoor, you know, really provided that good mix of having that indoor year-round programming, but then also having that seasonal, outdoor aspect specifically by those parents with young children. But one of the things that we also heard is that the, the indoor/outdoor option really does not have, you know, a sufficient number of lap lanes. So there were questions about, well, could, could we have a six-lap lap pool? And, you know, there, there's a, quite a large, you know, summer swim league in the greater Madison area. You know, outdoor lap lanes can provide fitness and wellness opportunities, plus it doubles as recreational space. And so one of the things that we looked at was, was trying to incorporate some outdoor lanes into that outdoor option. And then we also had several questions from you all, as well as from the project steering committee, regarding the, you know, different types of structures that can enclose an indoor pool. And so have some feedback or some information on that as well. So on the indoor/outdoor, we, what we did look at was one more option, where essentially instead of having 7,000 square foot outdoor pool, we had approximately two 3,500 square foot outdoor pools. So we were at 3,300 for the lap pool and 3,700 for the recreational pool. And so what this did is it would allow you to do those six outdoor lap lanes, but still focus on that recreational aspect that we heard a lot about. And then, as I mentioned, the lap pool, you know, when this is not being used for lap lanes, you know, it is, it is a recreational pool with a, you know, diving board, a climbing wall, open water area within the shower. And so we did want to, you know, just make sure that everyone understood that there are different ways to carve up that outdoor recreational pool and to make sure that we're not, you know, just showing one option, but, you know, recognizing that there are a variety of ways that that pool can blend. A lot of times, what we also do is combine these two pools. And so we'll have the six lap lanes, you know, we might have a little wing wall, and then we can fan out a nice big zero-deep entry with a play structure and put the water slides into that pool, or put them into runouts on the deck. And so there are still a lot of options, you know, that can be explored. And then the other thing to, to mention is that, you know, two pools, even though it's the same square footage, there is a little bit higher price tag. We ran some numbers on, you know, what would two 3,500 square foot pools cost as opposed to one 7,000 square foot pool? And so the difference was probably in the neighborhood of about $200,000, just because you have, you know, extra mechanical, two mechanical systems instead of one. So there is, can be a little bit of a premium to have two pools as opposed to one pool.
Well, George, one quick note if I could. This is a little tough to see on our screen, but I know Sue is working with Gabe, and we're gonna be creating a website dedicated to our aquatics project. So these, these slides, I believe Sue will be part of the content that we'll be including on the website for people to see and zoom in on.
Yeah, I'll talk more about that at the end.
All right. Back to you, George.
Okay, great. And so a couple more slides, and then we can stop down for some comments and discussions. And so one of the other questions that arose, as I mentioned, was, you know, are there possible ways to enclose an indoor pool so that it could be, you know, outdoor in the summertime, indoor in the wintertime, or it could be, I don't know, you know, a little bit of, a little bit of both, you know, a somewhat indoor, somewhat outdoor pool? And so there are several types of enclosures. This one is from open-air structures. And so this is an aluminum, or, yeah, aluminum-framed building with retractable panels on the top that you can, you can slide down. And you can see there that the, in the, in the center here, the, the roof is open a little bit, so on seasonal days, you can open it, or you can close it on the colder days. And you can see it has full HVAC ductwork to help have good air quality. This is a facility that we also designed, this is a Structures Unlimited, so very similar to the open-air enclosure. You know, it's very clear in this one that you can see that, you know, the roof is open on this day. You know, but the one thing to consider with, with this book principle, or this type of enclosure specifically, is that it's still an indoor pool. You know, you don't really have that wide expanse of an outdoor deck. You know, you're still gonna be kind of squeezed in by the walls, but sometimes we can work to do, you know, this type of enclosure next to an outdoor, and so you can move in and out between the two. A sprung structure is a tension, a temporary and permanent structure, becoming more permanent, you know, 25-year lifespan. It's a membrane structure that has, you can see the garage doors there in the back. And so this is a facility that we worked on in Castle Rock, Colorado. So it is snow-rated to, to those types of climates. And then lastly, as came up in the last meeting, you know, we have the Horizon Structure, which is the inflatable dome. And so in this instance, you have an outdoor pool in the summertime, and then you have the domed enclosure in the wintertime. And so this is really the only one that allows a true outdoor facility and then a truly enclosed facility during the wintertime. And so what I did is I just ran some numbers just to give you an idea of what that would look like. So the Horizon Dome would really be for that option one outdoor opening. So you can see on the right, right side of the screen, you know, we had, you know, projected that cost of that, that nine and a half to, you know, nine, nine and a half million dollar range, and we would see that increasing to about 11.7 if you have the dome. Couple of things there, you know, the, the cost of the domed enclosure itself, plus the footing work and, and support structures that have to go in place with that. If we would look at the indoor/outdoor option and use a sprung structure or a pre-engineered structure, you can see that, you know, the cost differential is about a million dollars to go from the traditional down to the pre-engineered, and then about another million and a half to go from the pre-engineered down to the sprung structure. And so that just gives you an idea of those different ranges of cost that come into play for each of those enclosure types. And then lastly, I just wanted to, you know, run through a couple of budgetary considerations. So we have there, you know, the non-traditional matatorium could reduce the overall capital cost by about six to upwards of 20%. Covering the aquatic center with the dome structure could add anywhere from one to 1.2 million to upwards of, you know, maybe 1.8 on the high end. And so maybe, maybe it's that 10 and a half to 11.7 million dollar range for that domed enclosure of the outdoor pool. You know, when we start to, to look at, at capital cost, you know, versus operational cost, we do find that we can make some slight adjustments to either the outdoor option or the indoor/outdoor only option to, you know, maybe reduce some of those capital and operational costs while still keeping a similar functionality. And so while we, while we believe that, you know, these concepts that we've developed so far are within that, you know, the right sizing for Wanakee, you know, we, we could look at some creative ways to, to shrink down the pool size just a little bit so the capital cost comes down, but we still could maintain the same functionality for those pools. When looking at the indoor/outdoor facility, you know, reduction of, of operating hours is, is really the best way to reduce the operational expenses. It's gonna cost what it's gonna cost to, to run the pumps and the motors, utilities for the building, but personnel is that, that one thing that, you know, you can really, you can trim down to make sure that you are operating the pool, you know, so it's available to the community. But if you find that, you know, after operating it for a year, we really don't have any people coming from this hour to this hour, and the people that, that come from, you know, in between this, you know, say 1:30 and 3:30 time slot, they would just come out other times if the pool wasn't open then. You know, you can look at some creative scheduling and operational hours to, to help reduce those costs. And then finally, with that said, you know, we, we feel probably the minimum investment for an outdoor facility is gonna be in that seven and a half million dollar range for Wanakee. And then that indoor/outdoor would probably be in that, you know, just over 13 million dollar range. And so that's if, you know, we take the existing concepts that we have now, and we, we trim them down just a little bit again to reduce the capital cost and, you know, do our best to keep the same functionality. But I wanted to, you know, proactively answer the question, you know, what, what would be the minimal capital investment for an outdoor option in Wanakee, and what would be the minimal capital investment for an indoor option in Wanakee? And so that's at seven and a half and 13.3 million dollars. So with that, that was the end of the, the slide updates that I have for this evening, and would welcome any questions or comments that you may have.
Sue, do you want to do your comments first, or should we start right now with George?
You start with George.
Okay. Let's see. Bill? Any comments, questions?
Bill, I'm sorry. Bill, Bill, I'll go with Bill first. I, I guess I have, not, I have to look at it a little bit more. I'm just used to the outdoor pool thing. That's how I grew up. That's what I know. It would be nice to have the both, but I, I wonder, it makes me, and Bill might know more about the, putting down the, the AirPod type thing. I don't know what that would be like. I have no idea.
George, are you, are you able to hear us at all very well?
It's pretty muffled. I was just sending you a chat to ask you to repeat the question, please.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll pay attention to whether there is a question in the comment that, that we need info from you on. Bill, did you have a?
I guess, I guess there's a question. How, how many people, how long to take down the bubble?
That was about the staffing requirements, how many people to take up and put down the bubble structure?
You know, typically, we find that that is in the 20 to 30-person range, and it usually takes, you know, about a day to a day and a half. I know that Sue had reached out to a couple of municipalities that, you know, have, have the domed enclosures and put them up and take them down. And I think that range was 20 to 30 people in about a day to a day and a half to put it up, and then another day to day and a half to take it down at the end of the season. And the second question, can they be done later, or do they have to be done at the time of production?
Can, can a bubble be added to a pool design at a later date?
Yes, we could definitely see that, you know, we could, we could talk about it and, you know, somewhat plan for it, just in the way that a pool shapes and sizes, you know, we, it better, it'd be better to, you know, have the pool shapes and size and more of a boxy, boxy nature, just because those domes, you know, follow a rectangular support system. But we can definitely. But we can definitely, that can definitely be incorporated after the fact.
Todd, if you can hit, I don't know if George can hear me, can you just say, it has to do with the moorings? That maybe we would just have the moorings put in for the structure? I think that's what was stated.
Chris, Chris Ellner was just clarifying that there's moorings, footings per se that the structure is connected to that can be installed upon initial construction. Correct, George?
Correct, yes.
Aaron?
I don't have any questions. I like being able to see the different, I guess, structure types.
Bill?
Uh, no questions, just a statement that I still like the idea that we're exploring the indoor-outdoor option.
Sam?
None at this time.
Mala?
None at this time.
Gary?
You know, the budgetary thing bothers me. I mean, seven and a half isn't a bad hill to climb, but 12 or 13 is a monster. And I wish we could still come up with a, if you want to call it a public-private, you know, Prairie Athletic Club. Hey, you build the indoor piece of this, we'll build the outdoor piece. And the part that I like about that is, hey, the village worries about operational costs for four months out of the year and lets a private company that runs pools manage that indoor piece for the full year. So I'm not sure where that's at, if it's anywhere, but the outdoor seems like at least it's a, from a budget standpoint, something that I can support.
George, that was a point of discussion about, or, or mentioned a concern about costs in general and sustaining the cost. One thing I can add, Gary, is that we are talking with Ellers, our financial consultants, on refining and doing a much more complete job of projecting a five-year operational analysis. And we do plan within the next couple of months to be back to the board with a much better, more specific prediction of the impact on our financial capabilities. That includes the potential to need to referendum for exceeding the levy limit, which, as you know, we just can't really accurately predict yet, but Ellers is, is on tap to help us work through that.
Okay. I just have a couple of comments, one being, we received an email today as a group, and I want to clarify that I am not a swimmer. Okay? But what I don't, what I hate is cold water. Okay? So I'm just being clear on that statement for the individual, so that, that that's out there. I also want to go back to a comment that I made in regards to when I compared this indoor-outdoor with a private function with the hockey facility and state that my point I was making is if somebody else is running it, you lose control of operations. And losing control of operations can do a lot of negative things potentially. I did not mean to infer in any way that the hockey rink was doing that, but I will say that five families put a lot of time and effort and resources into that facility, and they should be commended. All right? That's, that's important for everybody to know, and that's out there. As far as what George has talked about tonight, it's really nothing new that I haven't seen to this point. So I don't really have any additional questions at, at this time, other than, what are we trying to accomplish tonight with this conversation?
Definitely no action required. It's just a continued conversation about options. There's a, there's a lot of different pieces that are moving along one track. So this is more work from George on what kind of a facility they feel would meet the needs of the village and trying to refine those options. So really, we just are sharing with you George's continued work. We will be back at many village board meetings over the next couple of months to bring Ellers in to talk about financial aspects of this project. We'll also be back to talk about sites, trying to figure out what would be a best option for location. I also wanted to mention what Todd brought up. Gabe and I are going to be working, starting this week, on a landing page on the village's website where the community members can go and see all of the work as we move along. We will have links to village board meetings, so they can see presentations, conversations with the board. All of the presentations that our consultants have provided will be linked there. So that'll be, hopefully, a really nice way where community members can stay up to date and see what, what we're talking about as we move forward.
Okay. The other comment that I'm going to make is to put a call out there to if there is any families that are similar to the Goodman family that took care of making sure pools were a possibility in Madison. You know, we welcome you to this conversation robustly for this. I share the same concerns that Gary has with the costs, but I, I could say that about, just about everything that we do with regards to spending. Everything seems more expensive these days, whether it's our roads to, you name it. And this is one of those things as well. So as we deliberate and go through and, and put this out to the community to decide really if we're going to do this, that's, that's something that's important, in my opinion, for, for everyone. I'm going to keep harping on that. We're trying to do the best we can to figure out the best solution for the citizens of the community and get a, get a, get a referendum question out to people to see if they want it. And that's, that's where I see we're at right now. We're just continuing to learn with, with the community. And I don't believe anybody here has made a decision, yes, that, yeah, we're, we're going to do this and we don't even need to go to referendum. That's not a situation at all. It's going to go to referendum. We're trying to figure out what we want to put out to the referendum. So, and the staff is doing a wonderful job, as well as George, in giving us the information we need. So Brian, you, you look like you want to say something. I don't know why, but every time I look. Am I saying something? Because you seem like you're squirming, so I.
No, no, I was just making sure that, no, I was just moving.
All good, all good then.
George, Chris just concluded by asking what naming rights value would be to Councilman Hunsaker. We can discuss later.
Okay.
I, I just have a, a little thing that I thought of is that every time we get more information from staff, it helps us put the puzzle pieces together. And hopefully, by the end of this, we'll have some answers. But right now, we're waiting for every little puzzle piece to be put with another one. And location is maybe dependent part of the puzzle, and then financing is part of the puzzle. And until we have a lot of answers, we will not have a full picture, so.
I think that's a fair, very fair statement, and I think that's the process we're going through right now, so, yes. Okay.
Good, thank you, George.
Did you have any other comments?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, George. Sue, did you have any other comments about this, at this point? I know, I know, I don't remember which board member asked about working with a private entity. I know that we've had some discussions. Do you, do you have any information you can share with us or with the public at this time? Or is it too early still?
I think it's too early for that. I guess I would if, if I could indulge for just one minute. A conversation that got started at the last village board meeting, I'm wondering, I'll ask the question, then you all can tell me if you're ready to have the conversation, or if it requires more thought. But one of the village board members asked the question, who are we trying to serve? And I think there's a spectrum. Anytime you create a facility that would be available in the recreation realm, whether, whether it's a facility to serve mostly our community residents, or are we interested in creating the type of facility that would bring people to our community? And there's benefits to both sides of that spectrum. I think it would be helpful for us if we could have a conversation about that and start to narrow down that focus. Wondering if you need some time to think about that, or if you have thoughts already on, on that idea.
I wish we had a survey question out to the public and get their opinion, because it's hard to make, you know, take that decision. Because I hear so many different things, you know, gosh, I definitely want a warm water pool. I want a year-round pool. Hey, we can't afford that. Just get an outdoor pool. You know, I've heard everything on this topic, and it's a difficult one to nail down.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
All I can talk from is previous, and this was years ago, when I was, worked with the wave. And the people on that committee wanted a pool for the residents of Wanakee. They wanted a zero-depth pool with some lanes, a, a slide, you know, something that everyone in the community could use. There was no, there wasn't a thought of bringing people into Wanakee and making this a destination. And that's the only thoughts I have.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, not to disagree with Gary, but I, I, I guess we probably could get some kind of an investor to come up with two or three million dollars or something like that, and then they would control things. Maybe too much, and I, I kind of don't like the idea of selling my soul for a short-term gain. I think it should be a, a pool for the citizens of Wanakee. And if it does draw a few people from outside for a swim meet once in a while, that's fine. But I don't see a need to make it an area, area attraction. And we've already got little, little strokes. It's an area attraction.
Anybody else over here?
I guess, I think all of us would say, like, we're definitely, any pool should primarily serve the people here. But I think, you know, when we say like drawing people in, I don't see that as like we're trying to recreate the Dells or, you know, a regional attraction, but like tourism or, you know, drawing in neighbor people. It's like, okay, the friends that are in town with the people that live here, or, you know, if you're going, you know, oh, someone has a soccer tournament, well, I'll take the rest of the kids to the Wanakee pool over here. Like, it's maybe not drawing someone in for a whole weekend in Wanakee just to come to the pool, but it's in addition to the things that are already happening here. And like, making a pool for the current residents of Wanakee, I think is, I'm saying the visitors is like anyone that then could be moving here. And I think building something that maybe broader than what we think are the current people that live here, so.
Okay.
One, one additional comment, if I could. One of the things that I've heard is, is the people who, who are paying for it and absorbing the costs need to be the people that are served.
Okay.
So I pretty much go with like what Erin is saying. I think that we all have people in town already. And we have, we host soccer tournaments, we probably host hockey tournaments, I'm guessing. We have, but the primary would be like the people and their guests. I mean, the village, the people that live in the village and their guests would be someplace that they could easily get to without too many barriers. That would be my process.
Okay? Sam?
The focus should be on our community. Any pool we build will become some sort of destination in itself, like we see with people that live here going to other communities and using their pools, because it's our taxpayers that are the ones footing the bill.
Okay. Does that help? Okay. I'm just going to say, I probably will never use this facility, but I will use bills now that I know it's five degrees warmer than this whatever. That makes that more appealing to me, so that's a good thing that you were here tonight for at least one person, for at least one person with it. I'm, I'm in agreement. This is our, our community pool. We're calling our community, so it should be for our community. I'll disagree with Phil a little bit. If we can have a donor that's willing to step up, if they're a Wanakee resident, good for them. And if they want to put their two cents in, I think that's okay. And I think the community would probably say it's okay too, if they're going to put the bill for a big dollar amount. But maybe not. I, I don't know. I don't, I don't think we'd be beholden. I think the taxpayers are going to tell us what they are interested in.
Just don't want to cede control to them.
Correct.
The control belongs with our people.
That I agree with 100%, so, there you go. Okay, are we good? Anything else we need to talk about with tonight, Sue, or Todd?
I'm good. You good?
We're good? Okay, awesome. Thanks, guys. All right, next we have discuss and take action on future use of former village library, 710 South Street, and potential food pantry use. Todd?
Yes, the public comment earlier today was really, really appropriate for our, our next, a bit of next discussion here. The, the last, the last time we talked about this, we had a presentation about the proposed adaptive reuse of the old library for largely village hall, essentially 75% of the building for village hall, with the concept that the remaining portion of the lower level would be for the food pantry. So I want to talk, at that meeting, staff heard clearly and with some follow-up conversations with multiple members of the village board, it appears that the, the, or it sounds like the interest in moving village hall to that location, when you consider the benefit of the location with the constraints of the site and the proposed costs that were flushed out well by our consultants, it definitely went lukewarm, if not opposed to the idea of relocating the village hall functions there. We can talk about whether any of that, of that opinion is, has changed for the board, but we've, I've proceeded to consider alternatives with that in mind. And the village president asked me to reach out to the food pantry in regards to their interest, because when we met last about this, the food pantry just prior had stepped away from the proposal due to the, the space limitations in order for them to grow. If, so Chris asked if village hall were not utilizing square footage at the old library, whether the food pantry would care to reconsider locating at that facility. Chris asked me to contact the food pantry. I did talk to the folks there, and they're in, they, they have come back with renewed interest. Certainly, there are some, some things to work out, and what I wonder tonight is whether you would care to direct staff to engage the food pantry in further discussions. To remind you about where we were last time, the food pantry, we're just looking at the lower level. The upper level of the village, of the old library was proposed to entirely be village offices. But here, the village was utilizing a portion of the lower level for, for the board chambers, points of access for that village function, and then municipal storage. The rest of the space, this area here, including all the storage back here, was proposed for use by the food pantry. And they explored that option to the point of actually having tape on the floors to lay out the way that their clients would make their way through the, through the area. And when it, when it came right down to it, they just were afraid that as they cede continued usage of the food pantry during the pandemic was a good example of, of the priority that some in our community placed on that service, that they just weren't able, going to be able to meet the needs with that space. So the question to them that I offered was, what if it's the entirety of the lower level? Would the entirety of the lower level be of interest and be useful for the food pantry both now and as they continue to grow? And that certainly sparked their interest. They want to do some more work to be certain of that. But the notion of having, let's say, a drop-off facility on this portion of the building within servicing their clients in this portion of the building with another entrance, in fact, three different entrances, presents a, a, a possible long-term solution for them that they might be interested in. In terms of what would have to happen to the building to make it ready for their use in just the lower level, I did work with our, our consultants, Creative Business Interiors, who have become very familiar with the building. A lot of the work they've done for us isn't going to go to waste if we proceed with other uses. And I asked, I asked them, what would need to be done to this lower level to have it ready for the food pantry, essentially move and ready for them to come in and put up their shelves and paint their walls, et cetera, for their use. We would be required to provide bathroom upgrades. We would be required to provide bathroom upgrades for ADA accessibility, HVAC upgrades. The HVAC is all crammed into this little spot right here. It's quite a, quite a hodgepodge of, of units. We have had a company take a look at the facility, and all of those units have, have come near end of life. So we're looking at a complete HVAC system replacement for this building. We want to separate the upper level from the lower level in and around the stairway area, so that would be necessary, necessary improvement, and then design and architectural documenting and permitting for the project. Altogether, CBI suggests that this scope of work would be in the neighborhood of 145,000 to 210,000. That then would prepare the, the walk-in-ready improvements then for the food pantry to take it the rest of the way. The potential exists for our ARPA funds to be a source to support some or all of those improvements, if the board thinks that that'd be an appropriate way to utilize our ARPA funding. So that's the, that's the notion, that's really the decision point today. We could spend certainly more time talking about what to do with our village hall functions, but it would be good to see the old library coming back to life, at least one floor of the building, that I think that would help it to continue to be cared for and to sort of step forward with supporting the food pantry's use. So with that, I'm looking for, happy to have discussion with the board, as well as see if there's direction for staff to proceed with further evaluation of the building, scope of work, as well as designing a memorandum of understanding and a draft contract that we would enter into with the food pantry to proceed. So we're looking for that sort of direction from the board tonight.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Nala.
Did, at the last meeting, we talked about some paperwork for the school pertaining to the parking and our intentions. Was that signed and sent to the school, and where does that leave us with that?
It has been. Both the village board and the school board have agreed to that memorandum of understanding. It's signed, it's, it's, it's on their desk. We've also filed with the Register of Deeds at correction instrument, if you recall, related to the deed that exists on the property. So that's all moved forward, and I, as you remember, the MOU referenced the village hall function, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but the village hall functioning out of this building as the, as the parameter required for the village to maintain ownership of the upper parking lot. Is that accurate?
Yeah. So if, if you were to pursue this with the food pantry, we would need, we would need to have a discussion with the school district as to whether or not they would be willing to essentially lease back part of the parking area for the use. Now, keep in mind that if, if, you know, with or without that MOU, if, if the path for the village board were to take this action with, with this property, you would, you would have been in the same position. In other words, the MOU, while it has been executed, if you had decided to rent out a large portion of the space for the food pantry, we still would have been in a position to have to work with the school district on a lease for the parking area.
Okay. Thank you for answering that. That's what I was wondering about.
Question, Gary?
Hey, it's great, great location next to the schools. It gives some volunteer opportunities, I believe, and I know that building well, and the upgrades are needed, so I support it.
Sam?
Absolutely. Let's do this.
Erin?
I guess I still have my concern of there's no really pedestrian access to the basement. And I don't know if that would be part of the upgrades, or if that even would fall under, like, some ADA compliance, but I don't know why there was never a sidewalk there when, so.
I agree, and I think the, that pedestrian entrance to the lower level would be essential as an improvement we should make.
Yeah.
Okay. Phil?
I think especially if we can use the funds for it, I think it has to be done, including the sidewalk, if that's what we need to do.
Phil?
I like the idea of using the library down there. In fact, I'm going to try to tack on to, the Lions are going to be touring the food pantry on the 27th of January and the 2nd of February to find out how they can work in to help adopt, adopting the program. And I talked to a couple of village residents about, maybe we should try to work with them and put together a capital campaign to see if we can help them raise some funds to get them some more independence. And I think I'll explore that idea with Lions and Rotary to see if we can help them out.
Thank you. Nala?
It seems like we've taken a pretty windy road to get here, but some things seem right, and when the proposal originally came up, it seemed right, and this seems right. So I'm glad we finally got back to it.
I've thought about what our good friend John Lottmeyer wrote, or his, the title to his memoir, if you recall, was Things Change. And I think our intentions were all very good and positive to explore as we did over the past, well, geez, three, four, four years. And we learned a lot in that process, and I don't regret that work. I don't think you should regret that work either, because we, we have valuable information as a result. But things changed, and I think this is a new opportunity, and I agree with all of you and your points, that there is great opportunity here with the pantry.
Okay, well, I hope you'll agree with my point then. Since I didn't speak yet. I am fully supportive of this. That's why I directed Todd to do this, to investigate with the food pantry. I'm excited that they're wanting to revisit this and look at it. They're not a certain thing yet at this point. And the other thing with regards to the school district, absolutely, Todd, I did not want to have them feeling misled in any way, because we have been working towards this, and Nala Good Words is a winding road that we've been taking. I think we're at a good spot if this is going to come to fruition with the food pantry. I would also like you to engage the school district on how we can partner with them on the use of the upstairs, because they may have a use with one of their programs or with one of our programs, that we can coordinate together to work on something in that facility, since where it's located is ideal for something like that in a partnership, so.
I note that I did already invite Randy Gutenberg to think about whether there was some temporary need. I know, you know, they're looking at referendums and building new spaces to accommodate all their needs, but if there is an interim need and they're in a pinch, we'd like to know about that to see if we can be of support.
Todd, we had talked about the business incubator, maybe possible for this location. Is that something that we could also maybe look at the upper floor for?
I absolutely think that could be a potential there, along with public gallery space, if we want to incorporate that with our Wanakee pursuits. I think there's some, we'll have some good conversations ahead of us about that upper level and how it can do good for the community.
Okay, everybody good? Good direction? Everybody's comfortable?
I didn't, as far as action, in my memo, I just noted to, to authorize village staff to proceed with plan design and drafting of lease agreement to accommodate food pantry use of the lower level of the old library building.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Just for my clarification, Brian, when Todd says about negotiating, do we need to have something to go at them with, or is that something that they're going to bring to us? I'm just trying to figure out the, who engages who here at this point?
I don't think that you need to have anything to go with them at this point here. It sounds like it's going to be more of a discussion of interest on their part, what, what needs to be done to the, to the property to allow it to happen. We're probably going to have to engage the school district, too, to make sure that we could come up with some solution with them on the parking area. And so I think, I think even with this motion, you mean, things are definitely going to be coming back to you, but I think what this is essentially is conceptually, you've heard what, you've heard what Todd has to say tonight. It seems like you like the direction that this is having, and this is just a motion to allow guidance to staff to continue to move forward, knowing that this is still going to come back to you, certainly with terms and conditions for a lease.
Perfect. I was just thinking of your winding road, and I just kind of want to know, here's our path.
This is, yes, I think this is a pretty direct path.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any others? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. I'd have it. Okay, under new business, resolution recognizing February as Black History Month in the village of Wanakee. Tasty Kaufman came to me with this. Thanks, Sam, for reaching out. And he wrote, I believe, this. And had a couple changes, I think, since the original, maybe not.
Yeah, a couple changes with capitalization and dates and things.
Yeah, so I'll say thank you to him. If you want to kind of introduce it to the board, that'd be great.
Yeah, this was basically something that came up when I was running last year, that a resolution for Black History Month would be a good idea. So I looked at a few different examples and put together the resolution that's before you this evening.
All right, would it be appropriate for me to read it first, Brian? Or?
I, I think it's however you would like to approach it. I'm not sure if we've read, you can certainly read it if you'd like. I'm not sure if we've read all resolutions of this nature, but there's nothing, you can certainly do that.
I'll read it, and then we can have a discussion and then a motion after that. Sound good? That work? Okay. So, resolution recognizing February as Black History Month in the village of Wanakee. Whereas, Black History Month, celebrated during the month of February, originated in 1926, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson designated a month to recognize the heritage and accomplishments of Black people in the United States. And whereas, with the Civil Rights Movement and growing, and a growing awareness of Black identity, Black History Month, or National African American History Month, evolved to an annual celebration of achievements by Black Americans and a time for recognizing the central role of African Americans in U.S. history. And whereas, the contributions of African Americans from all walks of life and their endeavors to learn and thrive throughout history and make unforgettable marks in our nation and Wanakee community as artists, scientists, educators, business people, influential thinkers, members of the faith community, athletes, and political and governmental leaders, reflects the greatness of the United States. And whereas, remaining hopeful and confident about the path ahead, in a time to acknowledge the courageous fight for the rights, liberties, and freedoms for all Americans, the Wanakee Village Board observes and recognizes Black History Month and encourages residents to learn about the heritage and achievements of African Americans during the month of February. I'll stop there, because the next part's just basically saying it's resolved by us. So, any comments, questions, or I'd look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg to approve, second by Nala Fry. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the village of Wanakee does hereby adopt this resolution to honor Black History Month and recognize the tremendous contributions made by African Americans in the United States and Wanakee community. The foregoing resolution was duly adopted by the village of Wanakee Board at our meeting held today, January 18th, 2022. Good? All right, thank you, Sam.
Missed you, Sam. Thank you.
Okay, next we have, discuss and take action and negotiate employment terms for deputy administrator/communication manager candidate.
I'd just note that we do have a preferred candidate that we'd like to discuss with the village board, and there are some parameters outside of administrative authority for hiring that I'm allowed to offer a candidate that I require village board approval on. So I'd like to discuss those terms with the village board in closed session.
Okay, and what was Caitlin's last day here? Do you remember?
Third of December, I think.
December 3rd, I believe.
December 3rd. I have good memory. So the fact that Carla has been joined already in that short timeframe, we've been able to get outstanding people looking to move to Wanakee and work with us is a great thing. So I'm just going to say, welcome again, Carla, and...
And I can also report, Chris, that we had, in terms of the applicant pool, we had 17 applicants for the deputy administrator position. We, we've interviewed four people, and we have the preferred candidate to discuss with you tonight.
All right, Brian Reed? The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or preferment evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The village board may reconvene in open session as discussed and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. I'd like this for a motion to go into closed session.
I'd move for...
Motion by Sam Kaufman?
Second.
Second by Bill Random. Roll call vote, please.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Sam Kaufman? Erin Moran?
Yes.
Chris Selner?
Yes.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Nala Fry?
Yes.